Apologize for the late start of this meeting, but hopefully we'll conduct it expeditiously and appropriately. We'll begin by going to item number one.
Item number one is a Department of General Services report relative to a new lease agreement with Fresh Start Foundation for Suite A in the Browdy Retail Mall.
Okay. I just have one question for the staff regarding item number one. All I want to know is, is this in accordance with the appraised value, the rental value? Anybody here?
Yes.
I know it's supposed to be consent, but I just wanted to confirm that for the record. But I happen to know it is. That's probably one of the higher rents that we're charging in that particular facility. And it is 1,600 square feet, in excess of 1,600 square feet. Okay. Yeah, I think he's outside. Do you guys have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
I got a question.
It's actually a really good rental rate. For item number one, regarding the Fresh Start Foundation Suite A at the Browdy Retail Mall in Van Nuys. Basically, my question is 660 square foot space, a five-year lease with one five-year option on it, et cetera. But my question was, when it comes to the $2 per square foot, is that within the range of appraised rental value for that area?
Yes, as of today, it is.
All right, exactly. Mr. Stein?
It's a beautiful facility. And I know that the mayor has an office there, Council McCarthy has an office in the Browdy Center.
No, actually, we're next door.
Next door. Oh, close.
The older building. I'm in the 100-year-old building, not the new one.
All right. And the retail space was vacant for a long time. How much more retail space is still available?
I can find out. I've been away for a few months, and I can...
If anything, there's only one more space, I think, slightly smaller than this one.
But I'm not absolutely sure.
But the rest of them are finally...
Then it was taking a while to have those occupied.
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did.
But it's a great facility, a great location. And I don't understand why it took so long, if the rents were too high, or it wasn't any interest, or the market was slow. But with the court...
It was all of that.
Lot of factors.
Lot of factors.
It was all of that.
There's only one left to rent out.
Yes.
Okay. And is this Fresh Start Foundation? Is it, what is it? Is it a restaurant? Is it, how does it serve the community?
Again, the staff that worked on it isn't here, and I would have to get up to speed to let you know. But I believe it is a nonprofit. It does provide...
It is a nonprofit.
Provide services to the community. I'm just not exactly sure.
Okay, provide service then. It's not a retail, it's providing service.
It provides service, and it will pay rent. So it's a twofer.
A not-for-profit that provides services and pays $2 per square foot.
Are they paid?
Yes.
Do they receive compensation from the city?
I don't know. I don't know if they've received any money from CDD or any other group.
I've never heard of them receiving money from us. I'm not saying they don't.
See, I'm thinking if they do, then there could be some concession on the rent, if in fact, we're giving them...
Well, let's talk to Bernard about that.
Is he involved in that?
Well, he's the one that's been harping on the fact that we've been giving automatic breaks to not-for-profits.
Well, no, but if we're going to charge them $2, and if we're giving them $3, and we're charging them $2. I'm just trying to figure out, because I'm aware of the location. I'm not aware of this organization. Never heard of this foundation before.
And I can get you information on them.
You could. Just that...
So when we go to council, if you can have the answers to those questions?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
I think he's having some face work done.
You had face work done?
He does look better.
He looks good.
I've been out in the sun a little bit.
No, no, it looks like he's had a lot of botox.
It happens to me, too.
You had botox?
And lost a little weight.
You had botox, huh?
Mm-hmm.
It looks good.
Looks about 10 years younger.
Okay. Any comments from the public? We do not have any public comment cards filled out for item number one. Where item number one, public comment is open on item number one. Seeing and hearing no one come forward on item number one. Item number one, the recommendation is that we approve. So the motion is to approve. That item is approved. Okay. We will now go to item number three, as I anticipate these items will be quicker than item number two. We've got item number three.
And item number three is a motion, Cardinist for Smith-Garcetti, relative to a Porter Ranch joint use agreement between the city and LAUSD to provide various public amenities to the Porter Ranch community.
Is there anybody here from Council District 12 for item number three?
I am. Good afternoon, council members.
When about was the understanding made about the potential for a joint use agreement, roughly?
It was during the last plan amendment, development agreement for the Porter Ranch specific plan. Porter Ranch had an obligation within the original plan to provide a couple of school sites and provide certain amenities to the community. During this process, it was changed so that a larger school site and a bigger school could be provided. And it was the community who thought it would be a nice idea to be able to have some of the amenities within the school rather than in separate buildings. And that's how the idea of a joint use agreement, if it were feasible, and no one ever said it could, we didn't know, but if it could be feasible to use the facility for part of it jointly, this would be preferable. The agreement that was crafted actually fulfills a requirement in the new plan that would allow this portion to go forward.
Okay. So it was an original agreement in 1992. I'm pretty sure Hal Burnson was a council member...
Correct.
...at that time. And then modifications were made and updated in 2008, which speaks to the 13-acre potential school site.
Correct.
All right. And when it comes to this agreement, it appears that GSD will be taking the lead on, should anything come to fruition on this. I just want to make sure that...
This was our understanding.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that by the time we get to council, that GSD is able to affirm that their involvement...
Absolutely.
...is in line with whatever workload this is going to require for them to bring it to fruition, and make sure that they understand their responsibility.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's good.
Questions?
That's fine, approve it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So there's a motion to approve. But before we do that, is there anybody here to speak on item number three? On item number three, I do not see any public comment cards before me on item number three. Public comment is open on item number three. See no one come forward. No public comment cards filled out. Public comment on item three is now closed. So with that, we have a motion to approve. And that item is approved. We now move to item number four.
And item number four is a report from the city attorney and an ordinance, and a report from the Board of Water and Power Commissioners relative to the sale of real property rights to the LA County MTA for commuter light rail purposes.
Okay. And it appears that they're paying the appraised value of $599,000, $599,610 in addition to that temporary construction rights of $36,600. Seems to be in order from here. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Prove the sale.
Okay. Okay. We are now go to public comment on item number four. Is anybody here to make public comment on item number four? I do not see any public comment cards on item number four. No one coming forward. Public comment on item number four is now closed. With that, we have a motion to approve. So the motion is to approve the city attorney and DWP reports for authority to sell the property rights to the MTA in the amount of $636,210 for commuter light rail purposes along East Temple Street. Okay? That item is approved. So with that, we now go to item number two.
And item number two is a report from the chief legislative analyst and a resolution relative to the city's position on SB 1168, which would allow the LA County Superior Court to impanel an additional grand jury managed by the city attorney to investigate misdemeanors.
Okay. Want to come forward, gentlemen. Before we go to questions from the committee, the first thing I'd like to have clarified, what's the status of the bill in the state assembly? It's my understanding it got out of the Senate. It's a Senate bill, and that it was supposed to go to a committee today. What's the status of that committee hearing on this bill?
John Wickham with the CLA's office. The bill...
I know you guys are apprised of it minute by minute, but go ahead.
The bill did leave the Senate. It's in the Assembly Public Safety Committee currently. There was a hearing this morning at which the bill was held. It is tentatively scheduled for a hearing on June 29th, a week from today.
Okay.
Pete Echeverria from the city attorney's office. And in the interim, the city attorney has recommended two amendments to the bill for adoption by the committee. One is to delete the word corruption as a subject that could be the subject of investigations by the committee. The city attorney has become increasingly concerned that the inclusion of that word was understood to mean that there would be investigations of city officials by the grand jury, and that was not his intent. And he wants to have that deleted, so that can be removed.
Just so that the people who are not lawyers who are listening, there already is a system where anybody, including public officials, can be investigated, or a grand jury can take up the matters. And that's a federal grand jury, and a grand jury brought forth at the county level, which would be the jurisdiction of the DA.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, and you bring up a good point. What this bill would do is provide a tool that the city attorney could use in the prosecutions that he's already authorized to bring by state law and by the charter. It would be a tool that would allow investigation in those areas through the grand jury, but it wouldn't expand the power to prosecute. So to the extent that he has the power to prosecute any of these violations, there would just be other investigatory tools available to him. And then the second change that is proposed is that the terms hate crimes and discrimination be added as subjects of, that would be appropriate for the grand jury to investigate. And those are anticipated to be presented to the committee when the bill comes up again next week.
Hate crimes and what was the other?
Discrimination.
Do you want to have questions before they present, or? Okay, hold on, one second.
I have a question on the vote. What was the vote in the Senate?
I don't have it. Let me see.
24-9?
I believe it was 24-9.
24-9.
We'll get the official number. Obviously, a pass, it takes 21 votes to pass in the Senate. But we'll get the official number, Mr. Stein. Ms. Perry?
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pete, I've known you for a long time, and I respect you.
It's mutual.
Thank you.
We all respect you.
Yeah, likewise.
Anyway, you know, my problem with this has always been the process, not the substance of it, because I haven't even begun to delve into the substance of it. And if it's a good idea, and we change our charter, we have a charter amendment process to do that. If this is a good idea, the voters will embrace it.
Right.
I've always objected to it because I believe that this subverts the balance of power among elected officials as defined by the charter. So to offer an amendment that takes out the word corruption is really quite unnecessary, because no one was concerned about that in the first place. You know, we have the Ethics Commission, we have the district attorney. If somebody is corrupt, there are plenty of options already in existence to pursue any elected official on the issue of corruption. So that is, I guess what you call in law school, a red herring? The point is the process, the process for amending our charter. Now, the only person who is authorized pursuant to our charter to lobby on behalf of the city after deliberative action by the city council and affirmation by the mayor is the mayor's office itself. Nobody else, no other elected official. Now, you may know this, but the first way I found out about this is because Patrick McGreevy from the Los Angeles Times called me from Sacramento to say, hey, what do you think of that? I wasn't so thrilled to find out about that through Patrick McGreevy. And then when I began to dig deeper into it, I came to the conclusion, after consulting with CLA's office and, you know, other people in the legal field, that it is, including Erwin Chiriminsky, because Erwin had worked on the charter revisions in 1999. So actually, I called Erwin and asked him, you know, what was the process that you took then? Did this issue ever arise at that point? He was working very closely with then, I think, Tim McCosker and then city attorney, Jim Hahn, at that time?
He was the chief deputy.
In 1999. So I went through it extensively with him, and he provided some really, really good guidance. It was very impartial, but also that sort of institutional memory that we are quickly losing due to term limits. So the difference, though, is with charter reform, we had extensive public participation. And that is the key here, public participation on the record, not just going directly to another legislative body to tell the city of Los Angeles what the city of Los Angeles is going to be required to do, in particular when it has budgetary impacts. And so, in a sense, this bill tells us how we are going to have to spend our available funds. Now, basically, it all boils down to this. You know, forget the amendments. I would vote no on the amendments, too, because for me, that's not the point. Those are just extraneous things to throw out to either make some people think that that's what it was all about in the first place. It's never been about that. It's all about process. I believe in our legislative process. I believe in the amendment process. And I believe it should go on the ballot. I have something that's coming on the ballot either this fall or next March, and it's either going to get voted up or it's going to get voted down. But if we're going to change the charter, let the people who vote change the charter, not our state legislature. We are a charter-mandated city. That is the process that we should take. Basically, that's all I have to say. And anything else is extraneous, but focusing on the process and being consistent in how we pursue this charter amendment process, put it on the ballot. And there's also an opinion, and I think all of our committee members have this now, key point on opposition, this is from the argument in opposition from the California District Attorneys Association. And they say, just for the record, I regret to inform you that we're opposed to your measure SB 1168 as amended on May 25, 2010. And it refers to the LA City Attorney requesting an impanelment of a misdemeanor grand jury. And it goes through their entire analysis. And it ends with, the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office would be required to pay for the cost of a grand jury and could establish a precedent going forward that could translate into district attorneys having to pay for felony grand jury. So, you know, this is an excellent case study in the law of unintended consequences, which is why building consensus through a deliberative legislative amendment process is much more advantageous. You know, you've got to put your own sense of vision aside and subject yourself to public review and public scrutiny, as painful as it is, as time-consuming as it is, as uncomfortable as it might be. This is the democratic process. And I just urge all of my members, colleagues here, to take a look at what this document, it's called the Assembly Public Safety Committee's analysis, and submitted on behalf of the California District Attorneys Association. I don't know if you have a copy of this, too. Do you have that?
I believe we do.
Okay, good. All right. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Hold on. Do you have any questions?
Well, I understand process, substance, charter. I was elected charter reform commissioner. The issue that I look at is giving the specific departments the tools to do the job. We have a city attorney, Carmen Tutanich, that's been very aggressive with billboards, very aggressive with medicinal marijuana, very aggressive with doing the job as elected city attorney. I understand the process normally is the mayor's office that has representatives in DC and Sacramento follows through with legislation that goes through the council, goes through the committee, goes through review. And the mayor's office is the one that's involved in this. The city attorney being an elected representative, elected by the people, serving independent of that, is there any prohibition in the charter that prevents the city attorney from pursuing a modification of his powers in this manner?
No, there's not. And I hasten to add that this is not a modification of the powers of the city attorney to investigate criminal misdemeanors committed in the city.
Well, and enhancement.
That authority is already given. It's a tool that he has, that he would be given by the state legislature to do that. The charter already provides that officers of the city may exercise such authority and undertake such powers as the state provides in addition to those they have under the charter. So a charter amendment is not required for this to be accomplished. Moreover, it's not a situation where the legislature is mandating that anything be done by the city. It's providing a tool that the city attorney may or may not choose to use. And the city attorney at least has made it clear that to the extent that he would utilize the grand jury, he would use the funds that are appropriated to the city attorney's office for investigations that are otherwise conducted with private investigators or our own investigators, use that funding for the funding of the grand jury as an investigatory tool, and thereby not be asking for additional money and not cause additional cost to the city.
So in other words, he would do this within his existing budget?
Correct.
Not ask for additional revenue?
Correct.
To impanel a grand jury for this particular process?
Right. And it would not require a charter amendment. As to the charter and what it requires with respect to taking positions on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, yes, that's correct. It must go through the council, and then the mayor gets to represent the city with the assistance of any other city employees or officers before the legislature.
That's the process that Councilman Perry has concerned with, the process that we have in place.
For positions that are official positions of the city of Los Angeles, yes.
So how do we find that this doesn't fall in that guideline?
Because this is not a position taken by the city attorney on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, but rather in his role as a prosecutor for the state, for the people of the state of California.
But he wants something that no one else will have. No other city attorney in California will have this because of the language specified. It's a certain population.
Correct.
Three million or four million?
City's larger than three million.
City's larger. And there's no other...
Closer to four million people.
There's no other city in California that has a population near three million.
Correct. It would effectively be a pilot project that would last, I believe, three more years.
There's a sunset on it.
Correct.
So the process versus substance versus charter, it's not prohibited from what the city attorney is attempting to do. It's not in violation of any rule, regulation, procedure, or process we have in place.
That's correct.
Mr. Miller?
I would like to address that. The charter, it's true. There's nothing in the charter. But...
Nothing in the charter dealing with this?
In terms of an elected official, the city attorney, or any of you, or the comptroller for that matter, or the mayor advocating for legislation. There's also an administrative code section.
Hold on. Jerry, what you mean is, once we're elected officials in our capacity as an elected official, we can advocate, present, write a document with our letterhead as an individual, talking about how we represent, for example, myself, councilman of the sixth district. I can advocate for a bill without getting the council to agree that we should all advocate it on behalf of the city, or getting the mayor's buy-in, et cetera. The bottom line, as individual elected officials, we can represent that we support and/or sponsor legislation as an individual.
You can't.
Using our title, our elected title. But we cannot do so on behalf of the city without having gone through the legislative process in the concurrence of the mayor, correct?
Well, what I was going to get into is the administrative code section, which implemented this charter code section. Now, what it says or doesn't say, obviously, is, you know, the city attorney's interpretation. I can tell you what my office and what the council at the time thought it said, because I was involved directly in crafting that legislation. And the intent of that was to not try to put any elected official in a position of somebody challenging them because they wrote a letter, or because they made a phone call, or to infringe on their First Amendment rights. But the intent was to say that an elected official, using their official capacity, should not be out sponsoring legislation. It's one thing to express an opinion on a piece of legislation. It is something different to actually sponsor legislation. That was the intent of the administrative code section that implemented this charter code section. Now, I understand that the city attorney says that that is not what the administrative code section says, but I was there. I know what it was supposed to have said.
So if the city attorney had come to a council member, presented this as a motion, and then it came to committee, and then the committee accepted it, and the council accepted it, then it would go to the mayor's office to sponsor legislation in Sacramento? As I understand, the city attorney went directly to a senator with this concept, and the senator introduced it, and started moving forward in Sacramento.
That's right.
But that's not a violation or anything, but it could have been done through a process here. Pete, why wasn't it done in this manner, coming through the local process?
I can't answer that question for you, because I was not involved in that.
Who was?
And Bill Carter and the city attorney, who were up in Sacramento today, we had asked for this matter to be put over for some time so that they could be here to address that. And I apologize. I don't know the answer to the thinking that went into it. I can't tell you, though, that I was one of the members of the team along with Jerry that drafted that very administrative code section, along with probably hundreds of other implementing ordinances for the new charter. And I was also involved with Erwin Chiriminsky and others who were very much involved in the process. This is the first...
Much younger back then, Pete.
So was he. This is not the first time that I disagree with him, or that he disagrees with me, I should say. But that may well have been the intent, but it's the warding and the face of the ordinance that governs how it's construed and how it's applied. And in fact, there is no such prohibition.
Sure, absolutely. And this is not the first time an elected official has, in fact, gone on record saying that they, as an individual, with their title of elected official, supports legislation.
No, and in fact, as we pointed out at the last...
It's not the first time that's happened. I've done it. I've done it in Sacramento. I've done it in Washington. There's a bill in Washington that now has the support of the council. But before the council supported it, and the mayor concurred, I went ahead and wrote a letter in support of that.
And I have to tell you, this is not the first time that I have so advised. Over the years since the charter was adopted, I've advised that a number of times. There was that authority.
So there's nothing illegal, unethical, immoral, or improper in the process that the city attorney followed in proposing this legislation for his office? Is that correct?
There's certainly nothing illegal, no.
Okay, so while the process and the substance are of issue, the merits of the particular grand jury process that the city attorney believes he needs is a tool in process for his responsibilities. Other than that, there's nothing wrong with it, to my understanding.
As far as violating the charter, is what you're saying?
Well, I don't know if it's violating the charter, or it's the administrative process that mandates a procedure. But I'm being told it's not a violation or improper for the city attorney to pursue a matter of legislation in this manner. Because I look at it, if it's Building and Safety, or Department of Transportation, or Fire, or any other department, if that general manager needs to do something to enhance their abilities, they go to a chairperson or a member of the committee, bring forth the idea, we do a motion, we process it through, it would percolate, and Sacramento would be done. What I'm hearing is that what is being done in this process, maybe to expedite the matter, to get it done in a quicker process, doesn't violate any rules. I don't have any problem with, given the city attorney or other general managers, the tools do their job to enhance their ability to protect Los Angeles. But I understand from this conversation is we're concerned about the process that's being followed in this particular manner. And you mentioned the administrative code. But it doesn't violate any rules that are on the books. It's just a different process of getting it done.
Well, I mean, clearly, whether or not it violates anything is a city attorney called, and they've opined that it doesn't. And I have no doubt that it doesn't.
Yeah, it does, or does?
Does not. My point really was, at least our office's expectation of, and I believe the council's at the time, of what that administrative code implementing this charter section did do. And I think the expectation was that this would not have been allowed under the ad code. Clearly, the city attorney is opining that, in fact, it is. And it is true that others have done it. We have brought this issue up before. It's been an ongoing concern of our legislative process, both in Sacramento and Washington. I'm unaware of any legislation that has such a direct impact on the city that has been sponsored by an elected official without going through the process. But clearly, there have been legislation sponsored by individual elected officials previously.
Okay. Thank you.
You had a follow-up question?
Yeah, I just had one follow-up question for Mr. Echeverria. And I just want to follow this thread of logic. If you accept the argument that Mr. Tutanich has done this as an individual who happens to have the title of city attorney, but not on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, because the city of Los Angeles has not yet taken an official position on this proposal in the form of a resolution, and the mayor has not yet reviewed it and signed off on it either. So there is no official city position on SB 1168. Now, he and Mr. Carter are in Sacramento today, and they're lobbying. And so what I wanted to know then, are they covering all of the expenses for lobbying on behalf of SB 1168 out of their own pocket, since this is not on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, but he is... since this is not on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, but he is acting as an individual? So does that mean that, you know, the plane tickets or whatever, phone time, whatever, costs associated with lobbying on behalf of this bill, is this done at his own personal expense then? Since it's basically, he is acting as an individual?
He's acting as an individual elected official, so that I don't...
Is the city paying for this or not?
I believe, I do not know. I can certainly find out, but I don't know that that would be a prohibited expenditure so long as it further's a public purpose and one which the elected office is authorized to further.
Mr. Perry, if I might make a motion to sort of encapsulate what I've just asked?
May I reply to your question?
Let me just finish that. That I would like to know if that is a prohibited expense when an individual who is an office holder in the city, but the city has not yet taken an official position in a dispositive manner through the legislative process, and nor has it been affirmed by the mayor of the City of Los Angeles, whether or not it is an acceptable expenditure to use city resources to pay for that? And also whether or not they are using city money or not to pay for the lobbying effort?
So I think some of us think we know the answer to that question, but I'm not an attorney, nor am I, do I work for the city attorney. So the question would be to who?
To the CLA's office, the Chief Legislative Analyst's office, to give me an analysis on that, please.
Is it a one-day trip, up and down, one day?
And also, I would like to know from the city attorney's office what their opinion is on that?
If I may.
Only them, but...
Ellen Friedman has some experience dealing with that area.
Yes.
I'm Ellen Friedman, Deputy City Attorney, Special Assistant. Mr. Tutanich wears two hats. He is the public prosecutor in seeking this grand jury bill and the power to subpoena witnesses. He is acting on behalf of the people of the State of California. That is the second part of his job. So if he travels seeking legislative tools to enforce his power to prosecute penal code sections within the State of California, he is acting on behalf of the people of the State of California and certainly within his role that he was elected to perform.
Okay. Anything else on that point? Thank you, Ellen, for, I guess, your opinion. Because in this committee on this matter, we're hearing a lot of opinions, some coming from attorneys, some not. One of the things that I wanted to, I wanted to hear for the record, without the grand jury tool or authority or power, what is the actions that the city attorney would take in the kind of case that they would utilize such grand jury authority?
Let me ask Chuck Goldenberg of our criminal branch to come up and answer that because he would be the most familiar with that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you could repeat that so I can be sure I can answer your question.
Sure. What, absent the authority or power or ability to impanel a grand jury on a particular case, what would be the procedure without that grand jury ability if you wanted to go after somebody?
Sure. At that point, we become dependent on the reports that are generated by law enforcement, by citizen complaints, by the willingness of people to come to give us evidence without court process. We basically are akin to a newspaper reporter. We can do the same things they can do. We can ask, we can seek, we can look for public records. We have cooperative relationships with law enforcement, which they don't do, which certainly gives us a step up. But we don't have the ability to compel testimony, to do that kind of thing.
Without the grand jury?
Without a grand jury, correct. We don't get that until a case is filed. And we're seeking to try to enhance the tools that allow us to prosecute criminal cases so that we can kind of go up the chain of command in these white-collar crimes and get a few steps up from the bottom, try to get the more responsible parties. And to do that, we need process.
Okay, now, when you say that can't be done until the case is filed, I'm not a lawyer, I try to stay away from the courts, so I'm not that familiar with those processes. So therefore, when you say when the case is filed, when does that come about in the process?
If the case is filed, and Mr. Zine is a witness, and Ms. Perry is a witness, perhaps they were with you when you were victimized in some way, they get a subpoena, they show up into court, and they're put on the witness stand, and they're compelled to testify. Without that, they may or they may not want to cooperate in an investigation. We may not know what they saw. But that's how it works in court. You raise your right hand, and then you're compelled to testify. But you're subpoenaed into court, that only happens when the case is filed.
Yeah, but, so what you're saying is, without the grand jury, you're forced to only have people provide information in the court, not in a deposition or what have you, prior to?
In the criminal field, we don't get to depose people the way you, this is criminal work here. If there's lawsuits filed, then people get deposed, and you're, you know, you give your testimony, and it'll be used in the lawsuit and so forth if you're sued civilly for money. But in the criminal world, no, we don't get to simply depose witnesses and put them under oath, not at all.
So that's only done in the courtroom?
Pardon?
That's only done in the courtroom in a criminal case?
In the current jurisdiction of the city attorney's office, the misdemeanor practice of criminal law, yes, it's done in the courtroom.
Now, if you are able to impanel a grand jury on a case, then what's the difference?
Well, that will allow us to investigate. So we'll be able to bring witnesses into the grand jury, put them under oath, and require them to testify. They'll be under, they'll be under the, you know, the order of the court, they're going to, they'll be sworn in, they'll be under oath.
And this is before the case is filed?
Correct, this is part of investigation. And indeed, perhaps after an investigation, the determination is, no case can be filed. Doesn't mean every case is going to be filed. You investigate things because you believe there's probable cause. You're led to believe something, and you may determine that you don't have the proof. But you get to sort of turn over the rocks, uncover as much as you can uncover. And for us, it's environmental crimes, mortgage fraud, the white-collar crimes that are so prevalent now as a result of the economic downturn. And, you know, we're a city with, we've got as many people as a bunch of states, so, you know, we can use this tool.
But at the same time, the crimes that you just described, if they're that egregious, don't they rise to the level of being a felony, which falls right into the jurisdiction of the DA?
Some of them could, but the plain fact of the matter is, and I think the DA and the US attorneys both will tell you, and we have wonderful cooperative relationships with both offices, that they simply do not and cannot handle the volume of work that's generated in the City of Los Angeles. So a lot of crime, a lot of victims suffer, and they just, the priorities are such that the cases don't get followed through. So this is another tool that gets us in the game.
And if I might add, the complexity of the cases that we're getting now because of staffing perhaps in the DA's office, or just the sheer number of cases, complex cases that are coming up now because of the economy, we cannot, as a prosecutor, we have an ethical duty not to file a criminal case unless we believe that we can prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. If we don't have the tools, for instance, with the document-heavy case, if we can't get the documents and look at it, we can't file it to get into court to have subpoena power. So what the grand jury would do would give us a tool from the outset to be able to conduct an investigation which will tell us whether or not we have a crime worthy of filing.
And when it comes to the court process, that's open testimony. The grand jury is closed testimony, where it's not privy to the public or name broadcast in the media, so someone can be more candid in a grand jury inquiry versus the court exposure, which is open to the public.
Absolutely true.
And very seldom do they close the court to the public. So it's a case of whatever type of illegal activity, I want to come testify, but I don't want to jeopardize myself, my reputation, my family, but I'm more comfortable in a closed environment where that information does not get to the public. It goes through the internal process of a closed hearing in the grand jury. So there's a secrecy of the grand jury that doesn't become public record.
Absolutely, and also, something that got lost in the discussion of administrative subpoenas versus criminal subpoenas, we have a duty of confidentiality as law enforcement. When we are investigating, our matters must be kept confidential. So it's the fact that all of the investigation is done within the grand jury, and there is that secrecy, is a key factor.
I don't think there's a reputation of the grand jury testimony becoming public. They're very cautious about grand jury testimony, keeping those records very, very secure.
So it's your interpretation of reality that whenever somebody is subpoenaed to the grand jury or there's some kind of case that they're considering to take upon an individual or a corporation or what have you, that it's never leaked?
Well, I don't think you...
No, that's a real question. Have you ever heard of something being leaked to the press specifically?
Of course we have, councilman, and that's a fact of life. The leaking, of course, can come from lots of places. In the grand jury world, I recall the famous Whitewater grand jury. On TV, people would go into the grand jury, finish their testimony, walk across the street and hold the press garments to discuss what it is they were asked and say what they wanted to say. That wasn't investigators doing it, that was individuals. So sometimes the individuals, if they choose to talk about what they're doing, that's the public's right.
And what's the recourse if somebody were to do that?
Well, that would, you know, it's your right, your First Amendment right.
So in other words, once a person...
If I did it...
...testifies before a grand, hold on, once an individual's in that grand jury room as a member of the public who was asked to testify, and they cooperate and they actually testify, the moment they walk out of that room, they're not bound to not speak of what occurred?
No, they will be instructed, you know, to make...
You're a lawyer, there's a difference between bound and instructed?
They will be instructed, and the failure to follow the instruction could subject them to prosecution. That's not the, leaks aren't, I mean, look, leaks are just a fact of life. They come from a million myriad different sources, you know, and it's not a matter of law. That's just, you know, we all live in an environment where people leak things.
Yeah, but the one thing...
They leak things in your closed sessions and...
See, the one thing that I think that lawyers can feel good about is that when they take on a case, they can feel good about the fact that they felt strongly about the case, and they brought that case forward or filed the case because of how they felt about it. But there's one thing that no lawyer, no judge, nobody can ever give someone back, is their reputation. Because there's a fundamental problem with how we as lawmakers and you as lawyers see the facts. The facts of the matter is that when we read something in the press, if you're at that level of understanding, you read right through and you say, no, this is not right, this is not, I can tell this is not true, or what have you. But your average American, your average American, as soon as they hear that somebody was subpoenaed to a grand jury, just that alone, your average American says, oh, that person must be a criminal.
Even that...
There's nothing you can do about it, there's nothing I can do about it, but that's the fact of the matter. Nine out of 10 Americans, when they hear that, when they hear that there's a grand jury and it's regarding X or a certain person actually testified before a grand jury, they actually think that the people testifying are the potential criminals. Not even that they're potential, that they're in fact criminals, or else they wouldn't be involved in that kind of stuff.
Councilman, I'm not sure that's any different than LAPD knocking on a corporate president's door in the middle of the day going to ask questions. That kind of exposure is there, no matter how you're investigating a crime. The fact of the matter is that as soon as, as soon as there's any kind of police or legal activity, sometimes that becomes known, and whether or not that corporate president knows anything or doesn't, the office employees still see the police coming into the office.
But officially, this process is confidential. We are not allowed...
On behalf of the professionals in the room?
This process is confidential, and we would honor that confidentiality greatly. Our rules that we would use in this grand jury, as Mr. Carter has already explained, I think, earlier, we would follow the federal rules that are used by the United States Attorney.
Sure.
We'd be as strict as we possibly can be in protecting confidentiality of everyone concerned. And indeed, in any such investigation, most of the people that you're going to be speaking to as witnesses are in fact not going to be targets of your investigation, they're going to be providing information. They're going to be employees of a big corporation that are reluctant to testify, but under the confidentiality of a grand jury, might be willing to come in and give us vital information to make the case. That's the kind of thing we're looking for.
I look at this as, and coming from law enforcement, where I spent 42 years, when someone's name's in the paper, they've been arrested, and they may get charged, they may not get charged. Some people talk about it, some don't talk about it. But the issue of the city attorney is to prosecute people, he's a prosecutor, he's not an arrest agent. That's the law enforcement, whether it be the police, the sheriff, the fire patrol. Those are the folks that do the arrests. The city attorney gets information, does an investigation, doesn't make the arrest. The arrest is made by someone else. The city attorney is the one that's prosecuting, or it's the DA or the US attorney. So I look at it as the city attorney has a responsibility and obligation. And whatever the case may be, if we're dealing with large corporations, real estate fraud, bank fraud, those type of situations, whether the city attorney's going to do it, or the attorney general's going to do it, or they work together in cooperation, they're doing what they need to do to make sure the justice system is upheld. The whole issue about confidentiality and nonconfidentiality, law enforcement oftentimes, Richard T. Jewell, he was arrested as a bomber at the Olympics, and he was a security guard. It turned out that everybody suspected him, he was not the bomber, he ended up becoming a police officer, but his reputation was ruined at the time, and he overcame that. But I'm looking at the responsibility that the city attorney has, and I think the city attorney's office is asking for a tool to do their job. And our city attorney is very proactive and very aggressive in pursuing billboard industry, marijuana industry, industries that have caused issues with the City of Los Angeles. And whatever happens with law enforcement, if they arrest someone, they arrest someone. The city attorney doesn't go out and knock on doors and put people in handcuffs, that's for the local police to do. So I support giving the city attorney's office the tools to do the job. And if it's a sunset clause, if it works after that, fine, if it doesn't, it doesn't. But the fact of the matter is, I don't see why we would hamper the city attorney in doing his job to do what he is elected to do for the people of Los Angeles. We know there's been a tremendous amount of real estate fraud, there's been a tremendous amount of abuse in the financial industry. Maybe the city attorney wants to work with the DA and the US attorney to go after it. And I know that all the prosecution agencies are overwhelmed. So I don't know why we would hamper a city attorney in doing the job that he's elected to do. So I totally support the issue, whether it's the process or the substance, whatever the case may be. I like to get to the bottom line and give the city attorney the tools to do his job to protect the people of Los Angeles. That's where I stand on this matter.
I have some questions regarding the cost, should this authority be given to the city attorney?
Yes, Councilman, I'm Bill Mangan, I'm the chief budget analyst for the city attorney's office.
Okay, so you are, I guess, the person who would actually estimate or guesstimate or have a pretty good understanding as to what the cost would be should the city attorney have this authority?
Yes, sir, I have some preliminary understanding based on some analysis that we've done of some cases that we investigated in the past without the use of a grand jury. And what we've determined, first of all, we went and looked at the County of Los Angeles, which does impanel presently three grand juries, and we know what their overall annual cost is.
Which is?
Yes, sir.
Which is?
Which is $1.7 million a year.
You said three, they got the criminal, the civil?
They have two criminal and one civil.
Oh, two criminal, one civil, okay.
They alternate the criminal grand juries. Now, they don't work full-time all the time, but they impanel them quite often, and they have a very full calendar. But their annual cost primarily exists of the staff support, per diem, mileage, and the stipends that they give to the impaneled members. So we build a similar model on a much smaller scale, and on the basis that we would use it considerably less. We are estimating that we would...
But you're not, excuse me, you're not required to use it considerably less?
No, no, sir. Well, we would be limited by our financial ability to finance within our own budget as to what we would, that would be one great limiter on how much we would use it.
And there's nothing in the budget that was just passed by the council, there's nothing in the budget for the grand jury?
There's no provision per se. We have a litigation expense budget in which we expend for investigative services of private investigators, hearing and depositional transcripts, photocopying document requests, process servers-
So that would likely be the categorical budget source-
Yes.
Should you-
It would be our litigation expense.
Be given this authority, which would be effective halfway for the second half of the budget year?
Yes.
Which would be January through June?
That's right.
Six months, not 12.
And so in summary, in, in looking at some of the cases that we've investigated without the use of a grand jury, we see that they're very investigator intensive in terms of the amount of hours we have to pay for because they have to go out on an individual basis seeking records that are relevant to, to the case. With the use of a grand jury, of course, you can speed things up through subpoena deus ex tacum and require and request records be brought forward thereby eliminating the need to send people out on a, on a mission to go to this place, that place and that place to seek records. So obviously, from that perspective, you, you could have a lot more economy of scale in terms of the amount of material you could generate that may be relevant to investigating a case, particularly a case where it's very paper intensive and you have to conclude the case within the statute of limitations of one year. And that's another very important fact that I had heard brought out in a previous testimony here that these cases have to be concluded within a statute of limitation because they're misdemeanors. And so in that regard, a grand jury would be a very efficient way of subpoenaing records. I know we've concentrated quite a bit on the, on the aspect of testimony before a grand jury, but I really see the value in this in terms of expediting the generation of relevant paper material in these paper intensive cases that would eliminate the need for so much private investigative work and instead would put the expense out in, in, in terms of subpoenas, generating records and have the expense occur within our office where we are already paying people to do the work as full-time attorneys and paralegals, et cetera. But I believe that, I looked at two very large cases, a Well Point case that we investigated last year and I, I believe we could have a net savings of about $96,000 just on that one case alone. And that was, our total cost for the case was $147,899. That's our estimate for what it actually cost us to investigate that case. And so we could cut it down considerably. But that was a very paper intensive case, didn't involve a lot of personal testimony on the part of witnesses.
So you're saying on a case-by-case basis, it would be a cost reduction on the cases in which it would go before a grand jury instead of the traditional?
Well, there's always the exception, but I would say in most cases, there would be significant savings. And I believe that we would not use that grand jury more than about three days a month because you have to in effect put on a case during that day. You have to prepare people to, you know, get the witnesses in, ask the right questions, you know, kind of script it out. And so you can't just put together a grand jury case in a day or two. You'd have to have about a week's worth of prep. And knowing the way, you know, I've been in government 40 years, knowing the way government works, you're not going to put these things together very quickly. I would, I use the estimate of three full grand jury days, eight-hour days per month. And I came up with, on that basis, with even using an empanelment of 15 members because you have to have alternates and you have to pay people for their mileage and their per diem and occasionally, I even built into it that it, they'd have to work through lunch, we'd have to provide box lunches, things like that. And I came up with a maximum for 33 operating days a year of 181,600, 600, 181,600, which I believe we could easily take care of through our existing budget, given the savings that we would accrue on these cases. So there would be no net increase in our cost.
And you guarantee-
On that scope of operation.
But you guarantee there would not be a request for additional funds for this grand jury?
Well, I guarantee you, Mr. Zine, as the chief budget analyst, that I wouldn't go to Newt and ask for more money. No, sir.
So you'd work within the boundaries that you have the dollars and that's it?
I believe we'd have to.
You'd have to identify which ones are more important than others to pursue?
Exactly.
So, Councilman, this is an area where we did have some general concerns that the Superior Cost, the Superior Court bears the costs and submits the bill to the city.
So we don't-
The city attorney pays it, so we don't control the costs.
We're subjected to the costs that they say that they're going to submit to us.
And we can expect that they would have admin costs associated with that as well on, on their side of things. Since we have no control over their budget, we have no control, we have no auditing opportunities over their, over their budget, et cetera, we have some, some serious concerns about managing cost controls on the bills that we would receive from the county, from the Superior Court.
Would we use their civil or their criminal side? You say they have three. Would we use which one of the three or all combined?
We'd have our own.
We'd have our own?
Yes, sir, we'd have our own.
So there'd be four?
This would be a fourth, yes. It would not be using an existing, it would be a new one.
The county or we'd select?
Well, under, under the current setup, the presiding judge of the Superior Court would use his empowerment within the penal code to empanel a jury on our behalf.
And that we would be paying for that specific grand jury that'd be assigned to LA City Attorney's Office?
For the process to empanel.
And included in the cost, I built in the anticipated increase in staffing that the county would have to put in place of at least one additional clerk.
So your dollars are based upon the county operation?
It's an estimate based upon what the county's existing cost is. CLA is appropriately as mentioned, there could be an administrative burden. I worked in the county system for 40 years, I know that that burden probably wouldn't exceed 40 to 45 percent. So you could add 40 percent onto my 180 and come up with an amended cost, but it's still an overall net savings for our department.
As we know from past experience on the property tax, when, you know, the triple flip was implemented, the county substantially increased the amount of the administrative fees on, on processing the property taxes. So we, we can expect that there will be a substantial administrative cost that's put on to us as a result of this.
In private industry, they call it a markup.
Yes.
In government, they just say, that's just the way it is.
Walmart calls it a rollback.
No, they ain't rolling anything back, they're rolling it forward. Rollback usually means it goes down.
I just see the TV commercials, I don't shop.
So, the-
In addition, your committee had asked for the CIO to prepare a financial analysis. I don't know that that has been completed yet, but they are in the process of doing that. And so these are some of the issues that they were going to be looking at.
Do you think the dollars are reasonable with what the city attorney's office is bringing forward?
I have absolutely no way to judge that one way or the other.
Have you ever been before the grand jury?
I have not.
We will make an appointment for you.
Okay, thank you.
Which one, the first, second, third or fourth?
I've been there twice.
This is an area where the council and the mayor have budgeting authority over the, over, you know, they approve the budget and it's a concern that this is the Superior Court stepping in and presenting.
This, this potentially, should it occurs outside the budget? It's outside the budget. Now, whether the department feels that they can find savings, obviously in any department, beyond a few dozen folks, there's always the potential for salary savings and other matters that do or don't occur, do or don't materialize. But either way, the, the proper way to handle that is you would be categorically moving money from one responsibility to a distinct other responsibility. So would the city attorney's office say this bill were to pass and prior to September of this year before the legislature adjourns, would the city attorney's office present to the council how they anticipate and where they anticipate getting this money, such as through the budget process?
Well, let me, let me put it this way, I haven't spoken to the city attorney about that particular fact, but I would recommend to him that if it did pass, that we do isolate a fund outside of our existing budget, perhaps take away from our existing budget, create a new, a new fund. I don't think in this particular climate, we'd be going to the city council asking for additional funds.
Asking for additional funds?
Unless the estimate from the county greatly exceeded what I believe it would be at this point. I don't think we would have to come and ask for additional funds from the city council mid-year to implement a grand jury process.
Now, when it comes to the, this kind of grand jury in LA County, which would be the fourth grand jury, at one, two, three right now, what other jurisdiction in California seems to have this authority?
Well, all counties have the grand jury authority. All Superior Courts of the 58 counties of California have it. And the federal government, of course, has a grand jury ability.
But there's, there's an interesting city north of us that is a county slash city.
County city.
City and county, San Francisco.
So they, do they have a DA and a city attorney or do they have a DA slash city attorney?
The city attorney is just that, just a city attorney, not a city prosecutor. The DA handles all criminal matters.
So even though it's a city-county jurisdiction, they still have the bifurcation like all the rest of the cities where city attorney handles misdemeanors, DA handles?
No, the city attorney in San Francisco just handles civil matters. For instance, gives advice-
So that's how they bifurcate that?
Yes.
Okay.
But isn't that most small cities have that? The city attorney only handles the-
Yes.
City administrative operations and all criminal misdemeanor felony go to the DA? Which is what most around here do.
That's the case in this county with the exception of four other municipalities.
In LA County?
Yes, sir.
And there's 88 cities in LA County, approximately 88?
There are 88 cities.
Long Beach, Pasadena and a handful of others have their own city prosecutors for misdemeanors, but all the rest use the district attorney for misdemeanor.
And they have contract with city attorney, they're not city staff, they're contract with the cities?
It's under this county's general services agreement.
No, I'm talking about the city attorney that represents the smaller cities. They're hired just to be a city attorney, not elected to be a city attorney.
Some have elected, most are hired, hired guns, yes, sir.
Now, you're including all of the related costs, I mean, there's interpreters, you know, there's the, the overall cost of the court. The estimate that you have provided actually includes all of those miscellaneous costs?
I have to be honest with you, I didn't think of interpreters, but that would be probably irrelevant minor costs that could be added.
So as far as you can tell, the interpreters are probably outside of the estimate that you gave?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Let's see here, the envelope, please, what does this say?
Easy, Jim.
Yeah, I, I think I said that. The funds would come from our current city attorney investigative expenditures. Instead of spending on investigators, we would instead spend the money on the grand jury function. No new money would be needed, in fact, it would be a savings. And I think I said that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. And as far as we can tell, the estimated cost at the state legislative analyst's office is estimating it at what so far?
They estimated $600,000 at the appropriations committee, the Senate Appropriations Committee, I believe.
A year?
A year.
I can tell you exactly where that came from.
Please do.
It came from the base, if I may, if permitted, okay. I told you that the, the county's of Los Angeles existing cost is $1.7 million. And a member of our department who was early on representing, got caught flat-footed in a, in a discussion about what it might cost and he simply mathematically in his head added $100,000 to the county's existing three grand jury process, which, which meets more than three times a month and divided by three. And that's where the 600,000 came from, it was right off of the wall.
All right, and they're sticking to that, I'm sure?
Oh, of course.
They're not interested in those details like we are?
Is the county pro or con with this? Has anyone met with it?
I was just going to ask, has the county taken a position or the DA taken a position? Apparently the DA's Association of California is taking a position, right?
CDA, AI-
Yes, the, the Public Safety Committee report released yesterday does not indicate any county support, although the sheriff himself has indicated his support. The California District Attorneys Association has registered their opposition to this bill. And that's the Association of all 50 county, District Attorneys in all 58 counties.
But not specifically the DA of Los Angeles?
No, the DA of Los Angeles is not indicated in support or opposition to this bill.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the association had, had in fact taken a position, they're not required to, but that they, they did take a, a position of opposed. But to the question, Mr. Zine, the county entities, be it the board or the DA of the county of LA, but it appears that the only one who has spoken up for or against it officially is the sheriff?
The sheriff.
Which is an elected sheriff, Lee Baca.
Yes, sir.
I believe there are other law enforcement organizations that have supported that, is that correct?
Can I just make one more comment?
And Mr. Cooley has not taken a position?
He's, his position is not recorded on the committee report that was released yesterday.
And we have no evidence of anything different?
No.
Yes, King Man?
Just be quick.
Your name?
It's Mike Dundas, I work for the Los, the city attorney's office, as a deputy city attorney. The CDA position is, CDA actually only, only, thank you. Represents 57 counties in the state. The Los Angeles District Attorney's Office is not a member. Their office is, is at this point officially neutral and considering a support position in the same manner that the city council is considering a support position.
So the DA's association covers all DAs except for the LA?
Except for the LA District Attorney.
Because there's 58 counties in all of California?
And they, they're, they have 57 district attorney members.
Okay. So is that then one coincidentally happens to be the DA of, of Los Angeles?
Yes. And as to the other question, the California Narcotics Officers Association, the California Peace Officers Association and the California Police Chiefs Association have registered their support for the bill.
Thank you.
Couple of quick clarifications. I know in budget and finance, it was reported for fiscal year '09, '10 that the city attorney's office had a budget deficit and I not, I'm not quite sure what the figure was, but I seem to recall, was it 3 million? Maybe Ms. So knows?
Sharon So, CLA's office. At last count, it was right in the range of 3.5 million dollars. The city attorney came forward and utilized some consumer protection funds to offset that deficit. In addition to that, there were some additional savings or reimbursements that would be coming from proprietary departments in the beginning of next year. And those reimbursements, because they're coming in next year, there had to be an appropriation in the current year to offset the short fall. So at the end of the day, they were short roughly about a half a million dollars.
It was $444,000.
Great. So what I'm wondering is whether or not, whether, whether or not the city attorney's office is intending to lay people off to be able to afford this new program. And just for the record, I would like to verify-
Not only that, we're-
Well, hold on, I'm not done yet, okay? Let me just finish, okay? Any savings, and this is for Ms. So, the chief legislative analyst's office, any savings in the city attorney's office that might be realized or not realized to the office but would be under the jurisdiction of the council and the mayor, and is that correct?
Well, recall that with regard to the funding, general fund dollars, general fund dollars are appropriated to departments to accomplish very specific programs and agendas and et cetera, staffing expenses. And anything outside of that, if there are savings accumulated, generally speaking, you didn't approve the use of those savings, you approved-
As in the council?
Right. You, the mayor and council, the mayor and council control the appropriations and expenditures of general fund dollars. So to the extent that there are savings generated for programs that are funded, those savings typically would, at the end of the year, revert to the general fund or revert to the reserve fund. Now, as you know, during, in the interim during the year, those savings from various departments, not just the city attorney, but in all city departments, if there are savings generated within departments, those savings are normally brought back into the general fund and then appropriations are made by mayor and council.
And that's usually done on average quarterly? Is that what the FSRs are for?
Sometimes quarterly and more recently because of the fiscal constraints that we've had this year, we've done them every two months.
So technically, you're, you're describing a reprogramming of money, there's a process for reprogramming of money?
Through the CIO financial status reports that come before council and then subsequently approved by the mayor.
So again, if it's a good idea, the voters will embrace it. I'd say, let's go to the charter amendment process and begin the dialogue on the record.
You were going to say something?
Well, I'm not going to get into a debate over whether we balance our budget or not, but I will say this, I was brought out of retirement to do something about an $18.1 million underfunding situation that- million underfunding situation that I met last July 1, and not only have we fully overcome it, by the end of this chronological year, June 30, 2010, we will be $150,000 to the plus. And it's not going to be in the FSR, it's going to trickle in next year, but we beat it, and we overperformed it, and we're going to have a little bit of plus, and we're going to do it again next year, and I'm not worried a bit about what I view as a pittance in terms of operating this grand jury. We can do it, we can do it within our budget, and we'll make you proud. And that's all I got to say.
Can you do some work for the police department?
Sure.
They're our biggest, they're our biggest department, if you could do relative numbers with the police department?
You just tell the chief to listen to me.
I just want to go on the record to support the city attorney in this position of the grand jury for misdemeanor investigations. I think it will benefit the people of Los Angeles as they tackle the complex process to bring about justice with the corporations that are violating people's rights and abusing the law. So I totally support this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. We haven't heard public comment on this yet, so public comment on item number one is, excuse me, item number two is now open to the public. Anybody here for public comment on item number two? I do not see any public comment cards before me. Anybody from the public want to speak to item two? Okay, public comment on item two is now closed, see no one come forward, no public comment cards fill out on item number two. What we have before us is a resolution, if supported by this committee, actually states that it's opposition to SB 1168, that is the item as agendized. We had a statement from one of the members of the committee that he supports the city attorney's efforts, which I interpret as he supports SB 1168 as it stands. So do we have a motion?
Motion to support my motion to oppose SB 1168.
Does that include the CLA report, which the CLA report says to oppose SB 1168?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. A motion was made by Ms. Perry. Do we have a second?
No.
I will give a courtesy second to Ms. Perry. Okay, now we have a vote. Those in favor of Ms. Perry's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed?
No.
Okay. We have, what is the procedure in committee?
Majority no.
No. Do we all have to vote aye or no in committee, or...
Can you abstain?
If you're president or counted as a, I say yes, well, unless...
Unless you voice otherwise. Okay. So the roll is open, as I'm contemplating?
No.
As the third vote in the committee?
No. I'll cast my vote again, just to make sure it's clear.
Justice. Suspense fills the room.
Problem is, I think this bill needs a lot of work. Okay, I'll oppose based on, excuse me, the bill, which means that I support Ms. Perry's motion, but a statement to the city attorney's office, I think you have work to do to get this bill in better shape. I don't exactly oppose it in its entirety, but for the purposes of the decision of this committee, my, register my vote as an aye to Ms. Perry's motion. But truly, I oppose it as written. I think it might be able to be shaped up, I'm not sure. Okay, all right. So that's the vote, two ayes, one no, yes?
And for clarification, the ayes are to adopt the reso to oppose SB 1168. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. And any more business before this committee? We have gone through the four items on the agenda, therefore, this committee is now open to general public comment. Anybody here for general public comment to this committee? General public comment is now open, seeing and hearing no one come forward for general public comment to this committee, general public comment is now closed, therefore, this committee is now adjourned.